Whatever day it is, Tuesday, June 10th, and have a short roll call.
Commissioner Mom, Commissioner Roth, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Polly.
Here.
Mayor Neely.
Here. We don't require quorum in the study session, so it's not an issue. No decisions are made. First item is a proposal for revisions to full CMC, the system development charge for capital improvements. As I say, that's John Chris, but no, we're somebody who.
But John's gonna talk.
Very good.
Right, so, thank you. We will go through this in a pretty timely fashion here, but this is about some of what we've already been talking about, only a slightly different version of it. So, we have, we hired FCS Group, and John Gilarducci here is with FCS Group, about a year ago to start looking at our SDC code and the idea of making some changes to that. And really, John's done a much better job of delivering than I've done getting it before you, so he hasn't been the delay, it's been more our schedule. So, because of some of the recent, the recent appeal that we had, we wanted to bring forward this, this code, these code changes, and go through them with you in great detail. We're understanding that there's a notice period because it does affect SDCs, so the Home Builders Association, or maybe some of the development communities, is interested in, and we need to notice them. So, it's about a 90-day period that we need to get that notice out. We'll get it out later this week. And, and then bring it back to you in a decision-making meeting 90 days out, so. But for now, we'll go through what we're proposing and what we think is a better code for SDCs. So, John, you wanna go through that?
Yeah, so I'll focus on the summary of the specific revisions and not go into the line item by line item revisions. There are a number of them which are, I categorize them as housekeeping, bringing language current with the current Oregon revised statutes, a few other areas where we're just clarifying the intent of the language. But the first real material change that we're suggesting is in that section titled "Most Recent Structure or Use." This has to do with when a redevelopment occurs, the city's practice is to provide credit against the system development charge that would be paid for the previous use of that site. And the city, if, if the previous use, if there, if there's not been active use on that site for 18 months, then they have to pay the full SDC again under current, under current practice. What, what we're suggesting is that 18 months, that really development needs a longer period of time in order to redevelop and, and it warrants earning a credit for a longer period. So, we're suggesting with the collaboration of, of staff, that you look back eight years and credit them the most intense use of that parcel for the previous eight years. For the most recent four years, they would get the full credit of that previous land use. For four years to eight years back, they'd only get half of the previous land use credited against their system development charge. So, that's the proposal that we're making.
We think that kinda helps inspire some development, but gives a lot more opportunity for, you know, things that may be catastrophic, kind of things that have happened in the past for that particular property, so.
Well, they're very plain dates and guidelines, too.
Simplified, it's not overly complicated. As you know, SDCs can be pretty complicated, so we're trying not to overcomplicate that with this proposal.
And a reasonable period for, for staff and the developer to validate what, what land uses had been on that site, whereas if you go back much longer than that, maybe not.
Yeah, we've heard from other agencies that struggle with that because they don't have a limit. And then it's back to trying to figure out, staff trying to figure out how, you know, what the use was, you know, how many square feet of that use there were, so especially on the commercial side, it's problematic.
And I think there needs to be a deadline, too. I mean, yeah.
If, and this is, this is irrespective of whether there, the previous use ever paid SDCs at all. It's based upon the actual site's development and what it would qualify at that, at that time for SDCs.
That's right. Even if they, even if they never paid a system development charge, that would indicate it's a pretty old structure. Conceptually, what we're saying is, one way or another, they've paid for their share of infrastructure, even though maybe SDCs hadn't been in place 100 years ago or whenever they did develop. So, they get the credit for that.
I have a quick question about the credits. So, is there a certain formula where, how the credits are formulated? Is it pretty standard, or do you do it case by case?
There is a formula. If, if you were redeveloping, say, a small commercial site into a, let's say, a drive-through bank, you would calculate the system development charge for the new drive-through bank, and then you would calculate the system development charge under the current SDCs for the previous land use. Let's say that was a restaurant. And then they pay the difference between the two if it was within the last four years under the proposal. If it was between the four to eight years, then you would calculate that restaurant, the previous use SDC, and cut it in half. And they would only get credit for half of the previous use from four to eight years.
Okay.
For a new business, let's just say it's around $80,000 SDC for what they're proposing, and what their prior use was, was $60,000?
At the current time.
At the current, yeah, we're, we're always using the current numbers, but, but they would get basically half of that $60, so $30,000 credited towards their $80,000 bill, so they'd owe the city $50,000.
So, the second, perhaps more policy-related change is the exemption for public facilities. Right now, in the Oregon City Code, there is an exemption for public-owned recreational facilities from paying system development charges when they develop. One of the requirements in the ORS is that you use rate-making principles to, to set, calculate the system development charge. And in our view, this isn't consistent with rate-making principles. Rate-making principles require that you charge people essentially for their impact or for their demands on your facilities and your services. And so, to exempt any type of, of land use from an SDC for not a cost-based reason goes against those rate-making principles. So, we're recommending that you delete that section and treat all new development the same. The next one, under SDC reductions or reimbursements, this, this addresses a very specific case where a site is being redeveloped, and the previous use, when you calculate the SDC under the previous use, it was greater, a more intense use than the new proposed use. Under your current code, they would get an actual credit for that previous use. And in some cases, the way the code reads, they could actually get cash reimbursement for that, for that previous use. We don't, I guess, in looking at it, you know, our belief is that once a, your systems are sized to meet the capacity needs of a, of a particular developed area, once they downsize, you are still providing the same amount of system capacity for that, for that development. So, we don't see a need to provide a credit for previous uses in a case like that. So, we're recommending that you could essentially zero out their SDC, but that they not receive an additional credit or reimbursement for a previous use on the site. And then finally, there's a, there's a section at the end of the code which was added to deal with an under, undercharged transportation system development charges for a particular timeframe from 2009 through 2014, February of 2014. So, that section is no longer relevant, so we're suggesting that that section be deleted as well. Those are the main changes that are, that are reflected in the, in the code. If you've got, I'd be happy to talk about any specific proposed changes or, or any other questions you've got.
The next and last one, we're getting reimbursed for SDC, higher SDC. My assumption is that those SDCs might have already been used for infrastructural improvements. And so, it's, it is, it becomes a true loss to the city if those, if those funds were actually utilized.
And you lose the, the, you know, the inflationary pieces that go along with that.
Right.
The only time that might come into play is if you took something off the transportation list, so that your demand on the system actually reduced and you hadn't paid yet. But in that case, you would amend your SDCs and lower them. So, I don't see us actually having that problem ever, since our list pretty well exceeds our capacity under any scenario that we've come up with, so we're not ever gonna be in that situation. But if we were, we'd simply lower our SDCs to match that.
It's also difficult to track. I mean, for staff, you know, to have a, you know, development out there and that, that credit, if you will, then it's, it's difficult to track. We do traffic it for developers that are building more. Maybe if they built more than what their fair share is, so for instance, they build out a boulevard, and maybe they were only supposed to pay for half-street improvements, and we, you know, they agreed to pay for all, or we required them to build all of it, then we'll give them credits and they'll be able to track those, and we'll, that, that particular developer can continue to use those credits in the future. But this is different than that, so.
The credits that we're giving here, if their, if their SDC, I'm quite out of phrase, but their, their SDC requirements were more than met by a previous, or a part of them, a part of them had been already covered. Do you recalc, do you recalculate the SDC value before the development went in based on current, current monies? I presume, I presume so. Or you, or you calculate them at the time the development was there?
I guess I'm not far, I think.
Well, somebody, somebody, somebody had, there was a function there 20 years ago, and their SDC charge today would have been higher than the current use that's going in. So, there's a credit, there's a, there's a credit given.
The building was still there after, you know, I'm assuming the building's still there today and they're just proposing a different use. We calculate those SDCs for the current use using today's rates and methodologies, and we calculate the new based on today's rates and methodologies.
Okay, yeah, that's the question.
So, with that, again, back to, we, we wanna make sure we're abiding by our notification requirements. So, we'll, we presented this, and it's pretty straightforward. We did replace some language late today after kinda talking through that amongst the department heads, and wanted to make that a little more clear about the payback. So, there is that language that's highlighted in yellow. Not all of it changed, but that's the section that changed. And we were really just trying to clarify that a developer would get 50% of his current use. And our, the language we had in there originally left that a little confusing, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's good. I think it's more specific and consistent. I had a couple of comments and questions. One is about changing the approach for not exempting public-owned recreational facilities. I think it's important to be consistent. I do have a concern about projects that are already slated, like the library, that have already kinda been budgeted, and how that would affect them, and that's.
They're, they're paying their full SDCs.
They're not, they're not really considered a recreational facility.
Okay, so, so they never were exempt.
Right.
To begin with.
And their budget includes that.
Okay, so recreational facilities would be parks. Okay, okay?
Payment pools.
Okay. Good. And then, let's see, if there's one other.
Police departments aren't, aren't recreational.
Oh, gee.
Maureen will take the credit if we give it to her, I'm sure.
So, parks, okay. And the other was a question about, there was nothing mentioned in here about payment plans.
The, the city does offer deferrals, and that is under 1320-080, the bottom of page nine.
Oh, okay.
There was a, and that, that's a good one because the existing, this, we did suggest some changes here. They, I would again characterize them as housekeeping. You were offering a short-term deferral, which that could then be converted into a longer-term deferral, which is just financing the SDC, basically. So, we suggested some edits that would clean that up so that qualifying applicant can finance under the, there's, there's this bankrupting section of the ORS, so they can take advantage of that and, and get terms on the, on the system development charges. So, that, that is in there under that section.
I see. It says right here, either may be paid in full upon issuance of building permits or deferred, and that's, okay.
And, and you have to kinda follow, there's a long section of strikeouts there, and then it picks up "Under the State Bancroft Bonding Act in accordance with ORS 223205 to 295", that's at the top of the following page. That's, that's what lays out the rules for deferring and financing those SDCs.
And we, we talked a little bit about that in our past meetings, so we're more informed about that.
I see the city recorder was also.
Except for a lot of people do that.
The city recorded while some of her duties here in the process. You didn't know you had them, maybe?
No, I did, I did, and that's just fine.
The finance director has that information at his or her fingertips, it seemed.
It is, it's perfectly reasonable.
Okay, and one, one other, one last thing. I have to make up for people not being here. Under section 1320 dot 040 on SDC credit, under A, it says, "To obtain the credit, the applicant must make the request in writing prior to the city's issuance of the first building permit for the development question." I just wanna make sure that is really clear to people in the literature that they seek out or on the website or something like that.
What's the number?
Uh.
13.
13.
040.
20040.
On page six.
Page six, A. I, I know there's great literature on the website and available to everybody, but I just wanna make sure that that's clear, so there's no misunderstanding and people know their, how long they have to seek credits and what they have to do.
I assume when they're going in for a permit, they're, they're advised of this for their first permit?
It takes multiple forms. I think one, you know, residential's pretty straightforward. Commercial needs to go through some type of a, essentially they need to, because of the formula, it's not, you just apply one number. So, there is some communication that, that happens when folks ask for estimates on their SDCs, so.
Right. I'm just thinking on the customer service part, just to make sure that it's out there so people know about it, so they don't come back later and say, "But I, you know, didn't know," or.
It is a challenge, because, you know, our code's got a lot of those kinda things that people say, "I don't know about", and they wouldn't unless they read the code.
Right.
It is, you know, for instance, if a property is destroyed for natural causes or, or other causes, lots of times, you know, other than maybe a demo permit, they're not, they're not necessarily coming to talk to the city about that, so. But yet, that's when the clock starts ticking on these. So, having a mechanism for notify, notification is, is, is a challenge for us. Right now, we don't have a solution.
A demolition permit would not necessarily be a building permit, would, or is it?
No, demolition would not.
Because specifically, it's drawing on the, the city's first issuance of a, a building permit that the applicant.
But I think Carol's point is, that may be beyond the eight years.
Right, exactly.
And then at that point, they would be back to saying, "We didn't know about this code. Had we known, we'd have been here seven years ago," right? Or, you know, a year ago. I don't know.
There, there are two different kinds of SDC credits, and I think this has to do with the other one. The, when, so, we talked about in the case of redevelopment, you get credit for the previous use.
You're right.
The other kind of SDC credit is when a developer comes in and agrees to construct a project as a condition of development. That's a project that happens to be on one of the SDC project lists. The city has to provide them a credit in that case. And the language in 040, I believe, is referring to those credits. So, when they come in, they have to, with the city, agree that it is a qualified public improvement that would earn that SDC credit. So, I think that, that naturally happens in that conversation about what the project is that they're gonna have to construct as a condition of development.
So, sidewalks and that type of thing, extra things?
Could be something more major than that. I mean, it could be a.
Traffic light or?
Yeah, could be, or even a widening of a lane. It could be a stormwater detention pond. There's, there's.
Something that's already on the list.
That's on the project list, that's right.
Okay.
So, we did the Sequoia Apartments down there, Glen Oak and Myers Road, just south of the high school. They built Myers Road.
Okay.
And so, there were SDC credits that were negotiated, and then the developers' agreement agreed to what the reimbursement would be for the extra pavement width, the extra sidewalk width, the extra wideaway. And then those credits were then given to the developer that were then credited back when he came in for the building permits. So, a lot of times when we run into credits, we usually negotiated agreements. But the rare one would be someone's doing a subdivision, they demolish the house, they wanna get credit for that existing house since it was there, so we certainly try to make sure that's. That's the difference that, that's the difference that I missed, is credit comes in for improvements that are built by a developer. Reductions, reductions are what were given for prior use. So, we, we, I, I internally miss those, too, from time to time, so.
So, that language is gonna be changed, or no?
No, that won't change.
It's still credits.
The credits, they're basically saying, if you're gonna apply for credits, you need to notify the city. The reduction is something that I'm not sure we've got the same kinda language for.
Well, that's what it is called in the statute, is a reduction. We've referred to them as credits, and they're commonly referred to as credits. They're getting credit for the previous use, but it results in an SDC reduction.
Okay.
So, the terminology's specific, even though we.
Yeah, we're using them interchangeably. We probably shouldn't have, yeah.
Well, I think it's cleaned up and more clear, so, good job. Looks good.
I suppose a question, is there any, is there anything before us now that triggered this? Or was this an ongoing process before we saw any kind of appeal?
It should have happened months ago, to be honest with you. I would have liked to have had it happen, having gone through. It would have, hindsight, it would have been, you know, more timely for us to have gotten on that. We recognized it, you know, pretty early on. Like I said, we hired John about a year ago to study other agencies and their codes for, with regard to SDCs. And it's just been kinda sitting idle, waiting to get in front of you and others.
Okay. I guess there was a stimulus.
Yeah, so.
Sometimes that's, that works, yeah.
All right, thanks, John.
I, I will just ask a question, if you're able to ask it, if you know enough about rates and so forth. It has been stated that our transportation rates are higher than most communities. Do you know if that's true or not?
From what I know about other communities, and we often do those, in fact, we did that type of a survey when we worked on the transportation SDCs here a few years ago, not this last go-round, where they were pretty much left where they were. On that list, they, they're definitely in the upper fourth of, of those we're seeing around the state. Of course, every time someone does an update, that list changes and others move up. And the city's been at this level for a number of years now, and I think it's in the $7,000 to $8,000 range, right, for a single-family residence. So, yeah, that is among the, you know, there are plenty higher, but it would be among that, that top set.
You go about, back about 15 years ago, we were in a tremendous growth spurt, and, and.
And they were low.
Yeah.
At that time, yeah. They were probably artificially low for some of that.
If you remember, but though, in the, for the transportation system plan, we, we made, rather than make the adjustment that we had made, I don't know, four or five years before we did the transportation system plan, we chose to hold the SDC number and build the list, or create the funded project list based on the projection of what we would collect at, at the current SDC rate. So, we didn't adjust those. So, you know, and again, it's hard to compare apples to apples on these SDCs. Some cities, you know, if you're the city of Wilsonville, for instance, you might not need the infrastructure that, you know, a newer city might not need the infrastructure that we might. We've also got, you know, plenty of state highway around the city that kinda contributes, so we're kind of a pass-through city. We're also the county seat. So, all those things kinda add to more needs. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And is that, is that in this on the item, and?
Yeah, we're ready for the next item, which is the moratorium on land development, sanitary sewer flow-constrained areas. I'm gonna, Alita's gonna come up and share most of this. I'll do another little introduction, though. So, really, this is Alita and Carrie that are gonna take the line, share this discussion with you. But, and it's not the first time you've seen the problems that we're finding out about our sanitary sewer system. So, we're not gonna spend a bunch of time on that. We got about 13 slides that we wanna share with you. Really, we wanna, we, we need to, because of the meeting and the fact that it's televised, we wanna do a short review of that, the, the information that you probably already heard about. We really wanna talk to you about how we're gonna manage land use through this moratorium process, so you get a better understanding of what impacts this is gonna have on, on current and future land use. We wanna talk about the legal implications and our timeline for how we'll move through the moratorium. And then just touch on our upcoming rate and SDC analysis and where we're at with that. So, if you've got feedback and direction for us, we're looking forward to hearing that. Our main objective is to provide an explanation of the needs, and we've got four areas where we want to talk about. There's a, there's a fifth area, which, which Joe Alita is also gonna be talking about. But really, we're gonna kind of explain again the deficiencies and why we have them, the DQ regulations, some of our overflows, and then really just the moratorium. I think that's the big piece that people don't necessarily understand what that means. We're even learning some of that, as Carrie is helping us through that. So, with that, Alita, you wanna step into the?
Good evening, Mayor Neely and Commissioner Polly. The Brown and Caldwell has prepared a new sanitary sewer master plan over the past couple of years, and included in that master planning effort was a model of the city's sanitary sewer collection system. And as Brown and Caldwell went through the modeling of the system to identify capital improvements, to improve our system to meet existing and future sanitary sewer service needs, they, the results showed that there were four severely, severely capacity-deficient areas within the city. And those areas, we've identified as the Hazelwood Drive area, which is a set of sanitary sewer gravity mains that run down the Hazelwood Drive area and Warner Parrot Road. And then there's the Lynn Avenue area, which has capacity constraints in the sanitary sewer system along Lynn Avenue. There's a third area called 12th Street that also has capacity constraints along 12th Street. And then the fourth area is, we're naming the 12th Street, 13th Street, and Division Street area, which the capacity constraints are along, along those roadways.
Now, is it the dark orange areas that?
Now, is it the dark orange areas that indicate the capacity problems? We've got a few others that are not pointed out specifically.
Yes, so what we're looking at here are the capacity constraints that have been modeled during the existing conditions scenario for the city's design storm. And, and all of the red lines are gravity sanitary sewer mains. The one section along what looks like 99E, right here, is actually a tri-city main. So DEQ regulations require for systems to be designed to meet a DEQ-regulated storm, which is a one- and five-year storm event that has rainfall depth of three inches. The city's sanitary sewer master plan used a design storm of one- and 10-year 24-hour storm event that the rainfall depth is 3.5 inches. So to see how severe the capacity areas were, we had Brown and Caldwell run the model with the DEQ storm to see in, under existing conditions, if these same areas showed that there were capacity deficiencies. And the threshold that we're using for what is severely... There we go. The threshold that we're using for the severity of the capacity constraints is having the hydraulic grade line of the wastewater flow in the pipes within five feet of any type of manhole structure, the rim of it. And in these same four areas, under the DEQ-regulated storm, under existing conditions, we did have the same capacity constraints. And this diagram just sort of shows you what that means as far as surcharging to within five feet of the rim of the manhole. It also produces overflows into any type of basements that would also have, be five feet from that surface level. As well as, in some of the areas, we had overflows at the manholes themselves. So in this figure showing that in the four areas that we have... I'm sorry, we don't have, this doesn't point out the areas.
You use your mouse.
Okay, yeah, it's not showing it, but...
I have a pointer for you.
Okay.
Although it doesn't...
So in these, in these four areas, what we looked at was how much the area is zoned for the different types of land use in Oregon City. And in, this is summarizing overall that the number of lots in the flow-constrained areas are approximately 70% single-family residential. And the primary zoning overall is residential. In this next figure, what we're showing are the developable lots that are in red, which are either vacant properties or appear to have a high potential for redeveloping. Again, the red areas showing the total acreage of lots that have that potential for redevelopment or development are primarily residential, and 62% of the acreage is single-family residential.
So these are the areas that are actually impacted by the problem?
Yeah, because the other, the other properties are developed. So everything in green is pretty much developed, and there's maybe some small holes to that. But we've tried to go through and hand-count all those. I think Alita and our jazz group have done a pretty good job of trying to figure out. Properties, you know, if it looks like it's, you know, not at a full density, they've tried to highlight those.
So there's a lot up on the hill. Would that area be targeted first for fixing the problems?
That's right. I think we looked at the Lynn Avenue project areas, one of the first areas. I can't remember, can't remember the, how we programmed those in. But, you know, just, just to kind of give you a lead-in, we do plan to bring rates study to you. And in that, we're going to have some details about which projects go first, how fast they should be done. The moratorium drives a lot of this because there's a timeline behind that as well. But we're also trying to balance rates, SDCs, against that timeline so that, you know, we're not front-loading that so much that we're spending more than we're collecting or raising rate, you know, raising rates so high that, you know, it becomes problematic for the community. So, yeah, I think timing is everything on these, and there's, yeah. Some projects will be a little easier than others to complete.
Are the constraints lower capacity?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And the four areas are specifically gravity sewer trunk lines. So we have been looking at another area that we are not including in the moratorium, which is the Settlers Point Pump Station, capacity deficiencies. The pump station currently cannot convey the existing flows at that, within that tributary area. And that capacity deficiency requires capital improvements that are specific to upgrading pumps, motors, and the electrical equipment to meet the existing and future pumping flows. The, let's see, what we're showing as far as, in the various colors, were within the tributary area upstream of the pumping station. These were the lots that we see being added into that basin at some future date. The red shows developable land, which are, again, either vacant lands or, in this case, these are, all have a single-family residential home on those large properties and would be redeveloped into, I believe this is our six area. And then the purple area is actually existing septic areas where, at some point, when they need to have pipes extended for providing sewer service when they're, when they have a failure of their septic system. So this was originally looked at to be included as part of the moratorium. But we do have a developer that has property along Leland Road. And it's a 39, a proposed 39-lot development, where they would like to proceed with this development and expedite the improvements that are needed to the pump station so that it would allow the capacity to add in new development down here. And so the city staff is working with this developer to come up with a plan for the proposal being that the developer would like to provide funding to go forward with scheduling that improvement. And, and then the city would be looking at paying back the developer for that amount when the funding is allocated for that capital improvement, which we're anticipating in the 2015, '16 budget cycle. So that was a different type of capacity constraint, other than the gravity sewers that we have. The reasons that the moratorium is very important to adopt for these areas is the proposed areas that have the capacity deficiencies are during a wet weather condition under DEQ-regulated storm event. And so currently, we're, you know, the prediction is we're not going to be meeting DEQ standards if we do have a storm event that causes the surcharging within the five feet and potentially flooding, as well as backing up into basements. The problem areas, if they're not fixed, you know, we do end up with an emergency situation for taking care of the problem when it does happen. There's a public health risk and potentially contaminating downstream waters. The Clean Water Act prohibits discharges of pollutants into the waters of the US. And unpermitted discharges from the sanitary sewer does, puts us in violation of the Clean Water Act, as well as our MPDES permit. So the, again, the, you know, very important to fix our capacity problems before we do have storm events that occur that would cause further surcharging of our system, to the point that we have the overflows. So we are looking at the impacts of the moratorium. Once the moratorium is adopted, we would be looking at, as land use applications come in within any of those four areas, we would be denying any land use application that generates additional wastewater flows to the flow-constrained areas. And once the capacity improvements are made and fixed, we would take that out of the moratorium and begin to approve land use applications. The same would go with building permits. We wouldn't be issuing building permits for any land use that's going to generate the additional flows with that development. And again, we would be removing that, again, from the area. Once, a couple scenarios. If a single-family residential is planning to remodel in that, one of those areas, we're planning to go ahead and approve those remodels because they're going to continue with the same type of use of that piece of property. We would look at denying any type of redevelopment that where the use of the redevelopment portion of the project is going to be for a more intensive use. And one scenario would be just an existing office building that's going to change from that use to a proposed restaurant that has a more intense use of the sanitary sewer system. And Carrie's going to go over the moratorium adoption process that's pursuant to the ORS 197-520.
The timing, as John mentioned, is all sort of working backwards. We have to have, under the state law, we have to have these improvements in place in a certain amount of time. And the moratorium is sort of the first step, you identify you've got a problem. So the reason we want to put this moratorium in place is so we don't do sort of ad hoc denials because we have to ensure we've got public facilities available to serve these new uses as they come through the pipeline. So we've identified a problem, we adopt a moratorium. And that gives us about a year and 20 months to sort of figure out what we're going to do. At that point, you, and that is a series of four-month and six-month extensions until you can identify a public facilities strategy that will increase rates or increase SDC funds or somehow fund these improvements and identify a plan for getting them installed. So what you can expect is, is that we're going to adopt the moratorium as part of, I hope, the master plan adoption process. That's going to serve as our prioritization and funding mechanism to get these improvements in place. And concurrent with the adoption of the master plan, we will adopt, or very shortly thereafter, we will adopt this public facilities strategy that will be a sort of formality because we will already have the master plan in place to generate the money and start making these improvements. Because at the end of the day, these improvements have to be made within six years and 20 months. That's the year and 20-month moratorium, plus a five-year public facilities strategies period. So we're going to be working backwards. Once we know what the rates, SDC revenue prioritization of improvements is going to be, then we'll be working backwards to make that all fit within this timeline.
Carrie, though, that, to be clear, that's just the extent, the maximum extent allowed by law doesn't preempt you from fixing things a little quicker if you're able to.
Absolutely, absolutely. And this is, that is the drop-dead outside date. So, but what you should expect is, as we go through, assuming we get the moratorium in place, the moratorium is only initially in place for four months, and then we have to get an extension. Then we have to get another 60-day extension, then we have to get another 60-day extension. We do it like that until we have a public facilities strategy in place. So the idea is that there's constantly a public process to revisit this serious situation here and that there's this obligation to revisit and make sure that we're on schedule to get this done within the timelines.
So will we be kind of repetitively bringing this back to the City Commission for extension?
We will. And I'm sort of forecasting that now.
Yeah.
And hopefully, what we, because it happens that we will be adopting a master plan about this same time, we've got the benefit of all of that analysis coming concurrently. Because oftentimes, this, what happens is you realize you have a problem, you adopt a moratorium, and you are starting the equivalent of rate analysis from scratch. So we're, we're a little bit ahead, but we don't want to get too far ahead and not give ourselves time to get these improvements in place. So do you want me to, so from that, do you want me to talk a little bit about the schedule? Or do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, you can go ahead. I think most of it is...
So we need to do Measure 56 notice. That's the notice that, on the orange card. And we want to make sure that we update our website so that folks can immediately go to the website and see exactly what, who's affected, how we calculated it, what it's based on. And we've got, we just got the final documents from Brown and Caldwell on the detailed background on what the flow rates are. So we want to get that on the website. So we're going to do the Measure 56 notice here in the next couple of weeks. We expect to come back to the City Commission for adoption in August. One other question for you is, do you want us to go to the planning commission? We, there's nothing in statutes that say we do, but might be something because this is, this has a land use component, a very direct one. And we can accommodate that, we think, with a July 28 hearing before the planning commission. We come to you the first meeting in August, adopt the sanitary sewer... We come to you the first meeting in August, adopt the sanitary sewer master plan in the fall, the rates, the SDCs, come back with the public facilities strategy in the spring of 2015. And that gives us until 2020 to fix the problem and get that in place. But it can be done quick.
We're going to try to do it faster than that because my concern is, we have a group of people now who own this problem, sort of, it happened on their watch, they're familiar with the circumstances, I think dedicated to trying to address it. I feel like it's a pretty awkward slowdown of the whole moratorium for the community if we have to retrain everybody and get them up to speed. So we're going to actually, we don't know the number yet, but I think it's going to be less than we anticipated earlier because the overall figure is less than, some of the numbers John gave me early were, were really bigger numbers. So I think this is something that is manageable, but we'll know a lot more when we have the rates back to us and we'll have basically the solution. And there'll be a, a short, more aggressive solution, and then there'll be one in the middle, and then there'll be the longest one that's allowed by law, which probably isn't going to be something you want to do, frankly, because you're going to curtail development in these areas. And there's a big cost in that for the development community and for people that are working in the trades and other professions and jobs. So we're going to try to bring you something that solves the problem quicker than what the statutory minimum is.
Are there, are there financial mechanisms that exist at low interest rates in terms of borrowing that we can pay back then using the SDCs and the rates?
Well, we're probably going to have to use the rates. I don't know how much it will be available by SDCs. Again, if you're going to borrow money for any length of time, you're going to have to have a ballot measure. So we're going to be fixing this with rate money anyway.
Yeah.
So I think the, the smartest thing to do to avoid all those bond costs and the cost of elections and all that is to use the rates more aggressively upfront, make your adjustment and fix this stuff rather than going out through a bond process.
But I, I think it's your question, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but is there anything special that is offered to cities when they have a moratorium as far as interest rates or incentives or programs that help?
I think there are, the, the, there's some, you know, especially smaller communities or communities that are struggling with that do provide some loans typically, grants, maybe, but...
We're going to be investigating all, we're going to be searching under every stone for any of that kind of help that's out there.
It, it, it was my question, whether we, you know, you know, I don't know if this is an emergency health issue, but I'm wondering if there are, there are mechanisms that we could use that avoid is going to avoid the people because we're doing something which by my regard is something of emergency.
We'll be looking at all those possibilities when we try to finance this together after we get the rates and we know exactly how much we need and what they will generate.
I'd like to take some time, if you don't mind, to go back to the, two of the maps, and one of them being the, the red shaded areas of the, of the four gravity-fed impact areas. Yeah, that's it. This, for the most part, these, these neighborhoods have existed for this, for some time. Is it, is all this going to be a case of having larger piping or are there other mechanisms that are going to be used, or do you know?
They're all scheduled for larger pipes, building bigger pipes.
Okay. I'd like to go to that Settlers Point piece too, if we can. Yeah. I couldn't help noticing the large areas that are under septic lots. Are, are they still all annexed within the city or not?
I think it looks to me like everything in purple is inside the city limits.
Okay. And, and it has been annexed, and okay.
There's other septic systems out there, the orange, for instance, but they're outside the city.
Yeah. The...
Purple is in the city.
Purple is, are, are annexed, yeah, okay. At what point are they, just when their septic system fails, once they're actually annexed into the city, is there any other mechanisms that gets, that gets them into using our sewer systems other than their failure, their septic systems?
Failure, willingness of the property owner to want to hook. There's one other, which, you know, we tried to dovetail into the, the Lynn, Leland Myers Road study, which is, you know, looking at the cost of that, that we've had some failures out there. And it does seem like one of those project areas that we definitely want the sewer to go in before we build the roadway improvements.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, that would be one that, that I would push for and, you know, we'll have to work with the neighborhoods on those issues. So the one question that will come up when we talk about SDCs, there's a couple of questions that'll come up about SDCs, but, you know, are these areas that are developed and essentially there's not much opportunity for infill development, but yet they're not served by a public sewer line, should they be a project, on the project list for SDCs? And if they are, should they pay the full amount or something, you know, you know, should they pay something? In other words, should SDCs pay for the full amount of the project or should it be SDCs plus property owner funding, you know, more like a local improvement district where they contribute? Those are the, those are some kind of policy questions that we'll probably bring recommendations to you on and you'll be able to, you know, provide your opinion on that. But to me, I see these as kind of infill, or very little opportunity for infill. And the, the reason why they're not served with sewers is because they're a challenge and trying to get the individual property owners to do that always, always is kind of a challenge. So I, you know, I, I think our recommendation would be to include those projects in the SDCs.
Additional capacity, I presume, the, from beyond that point where you, I don't know where you, where you pump into the, into the regular sewer lines, but I presume those, those lines would be able to handle the additional capacity from here.
Yeah, our modeling's right on the edge with those, to be honest with you, but we think that this is a new enough basin to where we can do some INI reduction, inflow and infiltration reduction. But we are, you know, we need to work on that front too. I'm not saying it's just about making pipes bigger. We really do need to do some work with regard to reduction of our, you know, infiltration and inflow that comes through grain drains and catch basins and things that shouldn't be connected or leaky pipes, you know? We need to fix those. And so our, our master plan's going to recommend a budget for those, and so will our rate study recommend a budget for those kind of fixes too.
Yeah.
But I think in this particular case, if we upgrade the pump station size, we can work within that basin to kind of make sure we don't, that doesn't create downstream capacity problems for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alita. Carrie.
See what you have before the next half years.
Yeah, very, very exciting. Necessary, though.
I think we're going through the city manager's report. Was there anything else that I could say?
Nothing new to report tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, very good. Anything else for the good of the order?